In our lives. Thank you for the town of West Bridgewater for its long history and very hardworking, generous people. Thank you for the families and especially the children. Tonight, we pray for them, for their safety, our children, our grandchildren, teachers in the schools.
Police and fire, first responders, for everything that makes this town great, we give thanks to you and ask your blessings. Keep us humble tonight, give us wisdom and your direction in our lives. All of this, I pray in my Savior's name, the Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you. And now the Boy Scouts and Cub Scouts will do the presentation of flags, followed by I pledge allegiance. It's on the screen. Oh, sorry. It doesn't say there. Wichita stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, you should call the Girl Scouts. You do it again.
Do you see? Really? The Girl Scouts were actually supposed to present that. I apologize. Let's be a little more patriotic, all right? We'll do it twice.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of Wichita stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And sorry about that. Next, Stephanie Stanton will do the Star Spangled Banner.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Excellent work, everyone. Now, please join me in a moment of silence for all the town officials, town employees, and town honorees that we've lost since the last time we met. Eldon Marrera, Robert Smith, Dorna Beavis, Roberta Waite, Warren Turner, Catherine McMahon, Joseph Souza, Michael Kaminsky, Jr. Thank you. And now I'm going to invite Officer Richard Flaherty to the podium to present the Victor R. Flaherty Senior Civic Award.
Generally, my brother Vic, Jr., delivers this. He's a lot better at public speaking than I am, so I'll try my best. But if any time I could fill in for this person, it's kind of special. Every year, the Victor Flaherty Senior Committee meets and reviews applications for the town to hopefully recognize someone for their efforts and someone who has unselfishly volunteered his or her time over the years to benefit the town. Victor, my father, was a West Bridgewater resident for more than 50 years. During that time, he displayed a history of service with immeasurable amounts of volunteerism. This award was named in honor of his rec-- ah, this award named in his honor recognizes other individuals who have unselfishly volunteered their time behalf of the residents of the town of West Bridgewater. This year, we are pleased to announce that Marion Leonard is the 2025 recipient of the Victor R. Flaherty Senior Civic Award. Many of you here tonight may not know but the Victor R. Flaherty Senior Civic Award plaque showing all over the-- all of the past recipients is displayed on the first-floor hallway at the town hall, directly in front of the town clerk's office. It's really fitting is how we recognize tonight Marion Leonard having this plaque displayed directly in front of the office that she held for so many years. The location of the Victor R. Flaherty Senior Plaque in front of the town clerk's office is just a coincidence as tonight we honor Marion for her years of volunteerism and her unselfish giving of her time to the youth, elderly, and many other residents of West Bridgewater. Thank you, Marion. I know my father is watching and would be proud. You've been selected and recognized tonight for all you have done. Marion Leonard, many of you know, also served as past-- as the past town moderator from 2006 to 2009. She moderated over many past annual and special town events similar tonight. But most may not remember that many years after her retirement, she was asked to volunteer to step in as the moderator due to the sudden death of the town moderator, Jim Benson. This was an important role as this town meeting was rapidly approaching and the town needed her expertise to run the meeting due to some believed controversial warrant articles. I remember this meeting as a new police-- as the new police and fire facility needed the final town meeting vote to approve our present public safety center we all see today. Many residents thank Marion for stepping in during this difficult time, but I would imagine many firefighters and officers appreciate her dedication a bit more as the final stage was built to build our police and fire complex. Marion also headed the Veterans Memorial Veterans Day Committee from 1991 to 2002. She served for many years on the Housing Authority from 2000 to 2018, making sure the aging citizens had affordable and safe housing. Marion performed hundreds of marriages ceremonies free of charge to many of and probably a few couples that are in here tonight. In closing, Marion also gave many, many years to the youth of the town. Marion worked directly with my father as the YAA secretary. Marion and her husband, Bob, gave countless hours to the WB YAA and the town youth sports still active today because of their individuals like Vic and Marion. Please join me in honoring this year's recipient, recipient of the Victor R. Flaherty Senior Civic Award, Marion Leonard.
And if you want to take over tonight's town meeting, you're more than welcome to. For old times' sake. That being a conclusion of our pre-town meeting ceremony, I just want to remind everyone, before we get started, please be respectful, please be aware of everyone's time, please, if things get repeated, I'm going to cut you off and we're going to hear from people who have new things to present. Celtics are playing tonight, too, so that's good to keep in mind. Don't do any spoilers, though. I got to watch it later. So I'm going to now call-- the hour is now 6:07, and I'm going to have the town clerk read the warrant.
To either of the constables of West Bridgewater in the county of Plymouth, greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town of West Bridgewater, qualified to vote in election and town affairs, to meet at the West Bridgewater Middle Senior High School in said town on May 12, 2025, at 6:00 PM, then and there to act on the following articles to wit. And you are directed to serve this warrant by posting attested copies thereof as directed by the bylaws of the town of West Bridgewater at least seven days before the time of holding of aforesaid meeting. Hereof not fail not and make due return of this warrant with your doings thereon to the town clerk of said West Bridgewater at the time and place of the meeting as aforesaid. Given under our hands and sealed the sixteenth day of April in the year of our Lord, 2025. Pursuant to within the warrant, I have this day notified and warned the inhabitants of the town of West Bridgewater, qualified to vote in elections and town affairs, to meet at the time and place within mentioned by posting various attested copies within-- of within warrant at various locations throughout Precinct One and Two, seven days at least before the aforesaid annual town meeting. Brian A. O'Connell III, Constable, Town of West Bridgewater.
Thank you. Article One and Two are consent articles. That is, Selectman Ryan.
Good evening. Article One, move to accept all reports of town officers. Article Two, move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into contract or contracts with the Massachusetts Department of Public Works for the construction and maintenance of public highways for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee voted unanimously-- recommended unanimously, five-zero.
Thank you. Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen recommended unanimously.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consent Articles One and Two have been voted on unanimously. Passed unanimously, sorry. Article Three, Selectman Perez?
That the town vote to determine the salaries of the following elected town officers for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025. Moderator, three hundred and thirty-eight. Board of Selectmen, ten thousand three hundred and seventy-five. Town Clerk, eighty-three thousand seven hundred and six. Board of Health, five thousand one hundred and thirty-three. Board of Assessor, ten thousand five hundred and thirty-nine. Water Commissioner, seven thousand two hundred and ninety-five. The following officers shall serve without pay. Library Trustees, Planning Board, School Committee, Tree Warden.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Finance Committee?
Recommended unanimously, five-zero.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously.
Thank you. Would you like to speak to the motion? Okay. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passions unanimously. Okay, Article Four. This is your town budget. It's in the big book you grabbed at the door. So what we're going to do is I'm going to read through the budget, each department or category, and the total. If you have any questions or comments you would like to make, just yell out "hold." And once we have gone through all of them, we'll go back and visit each "hold." But first, we're going to have Janice Fox read the motion.
Move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of forty-six million, seven hundred seventeen thousand, eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars for the maintenance and support of the several departments for the town and other usual and necessary town charges as herein specified and requested by the Finance Committee for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025, for the purposes herein described, and further that the sum of forty-two million, five hundred and fifty-two thousand, five hundred and forty-nine dollars be raised and appropriated, and the sum of four million, one hundred and sixty-five thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars be transferred as follows. From estimated water revenues, two million, three hundred and fourteen thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars. From emergency medical services receipts, five hundred and fifty thousand. From free cash to offset debt exclusion borrowing costs for the new, maybe not so new anymore, middle senior high school, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. From free cash, nine hundred and fifty thousand, nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars. A total of four million, one hundred and sixty-five thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommended unanimously.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously.
Thank you. The town administrators-- yeah, geez, what is wrong with me today? The town administrator has a presentation that's around seven minutes long. He's going to kind of walk through the budget.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Dave Gagnon. I'm your town administrator. So first things first, you're going to be voting on your FY '26 budget, which actually starts on July 1 of this year. The budget may be approved for July 1, but it actually started in December of 2024 when the Board of Selectmen tasked me to reach out to all departments and to seek their budget requests. From February through April, the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee held multiple budget hearings with each and every department to analyze what it is that they're looking for. My job then in April is to condense that budget into a balanced budget, presented to the Board of Selectmen, which they did in April, and approved this budget, and then sent it over to the Finance Committee, and the Finance Committee then takes a vote, which is what they're recommending to you this evening. Quick highlights of the budget itself. Article Four. Your overall budget is forty-six million, seven hundred and seventeen thousand dollars and change. That represents a $2.1 million increase year over year, or about a 4.72% increase. Within that budget, in order to afford it and to defray some of the tax costs, every year since I have been here, we have transferred three hundred and fifty thousand from free cash. So that means over that period of time, it saved us about $4 million in your tax overlay. Unfortunately, this year as well, we've also had to transfer about another $1 million or so in order to be able to balance. The negative is, we really don't want to be using one-time funds to balance. The positive is that we had the money, so we didn't have to hit the tax rate. If you want to take a look at the budget and do a real deep dive into it, this is a quick snapshot. Five budgets out of fifty-- you have fifty budgets. Out of those fifty, only five budgets make up almost 80% of your entire budget, and you'll see them up there on the screen. Those five budgets may represent almost 80% of the budget, but they actually represent 98% of the increase year over year. So think about that $2.1 million increase. Only five budgets make up almost the entirety of that number. After we're done the budget, we will then turn ourselves to some fiscal elements of the articles as well. Articles Eight and Nine will be your CPC articles. There's only two this year. And then after that, we will turn our attention to some fiscal amendments, articles as well, including the capital budget items. On the town side, there is no borrowing. 100% that will be before you will be using free cash and therefore will not affect the tax rate, or will there be borrowing? What is free cash? Free cash is a legal term defined by the state that basically means that last year we brought in a little bit more money than we anticipated and/or budgeted spent a little bit less money than was appropriated, and the two of them added together equaled about $3.2 million that the town accountant, through the Department of Revenue, certified in early fall last year. You remember that you had a special town meeting where you bought Howard Street property for $430,000, and the rest of that is going to be spent tonight on either offsetting the tax rate or on capital budget items. After that, you'll have a couple of articles on your water department. Their free cash is called water surplus, generated the same way, additional revenue that came in, not anticipated, and expenditures not expensed. They had about $275,000 certified. They'll spend about $113,001 item. The rest will be a borrowing article in reference to a water treatment plant. Most of that $42 million has to actually come from the tax rolls. Our state aid this year, quite frankly, is really not that robust, and we're starting to see a pinch point at the state level on this. You'll see your Chapter 70 funds over the past 10 years on a positive has more than doubled. You could see that for a period of time, that graph actually becomes almost parabolic. But you'll also notice that the last two years, it's basically beginning to stagnate. I'll talk about that in one moment. Chapter 90 funds, which is for sidewalks and road construction, and local aid, which is for all purposes, you could see over those 10 years, or those itty-bitty little bars that are basically flat over the last 10 years. So here's the pinch point, is that for local aid, it only went up $17,000 year over year. In Chapter 70 funds, only went up $85,000. We have never seen that. So you have a $2.1 million increase, and only 100 grand is coming from the state. That's your pinch point. Here's the positive, is that I got here in 2013, you had $11,000 in your stabilization account. And the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee have shown a lot of leadership on this issue to make sure that we have a robust rainy day account for the what-if in some time in the future. So at this point, we do have $3.5 million in it, so therefore, your balance sheet is healthy. The positive is, is that you have the money. Unfortunately, we can't add to it this year, but at least you do have the money. After we're done all of our financial articles, just one quick note, there are six zoning articles, but four of them will not be moved. The Planning Board is in charge of zoning. There is four of them, they will not be moving, including the MBTA article. That was a consensus decision between the Planning Board, the Finance Committee, and the Board of Selectmen, because we believe for various reasons, it would be better to call a special town meeting in the fall and discuss zoning at that point. So that way it'll be all-inclusive at that time. Thank you very much. Have a great meeting.
Thank you. So like I talked about before, I'm going to go through the budget, call out the department, and then the total amount for the budget. Any questions, comments, concerns, just yell out "hold" when I yell out the department. Starting with moderator, $788. Board of Selectmen, $424,756. Town Planner, $272,651. Finance Committee, $3,100.
Can I put a hold on that?
Of course. Okay. Reserve Fund, sorry, Finance Committee Reserve Fund, that is $67,000. Accountant, $126,673. Assessors, $286,581. Town Council, $87,000. Information Systems, $149,176.
Excuse me, Mr. Moderator. Can I go back to the treasurer? Can I put a hold on that?
Treasurer, yeah. Cable TV Committee, $1,100. Town Clerk, $168,244. Elections Registration, $28,516. Conservation, that is $93,442. Open Space Committee, $5,000. Agricultural Commission, $600. Planning Board, $29,818. Board of Appeals, $6,577. Rent Control Board, $4,909. ADA Compliance Committee, $4,000. Insurances, $326,194. Town Hall, $78,530. Municipal Building Needs Committee, $1,565. Waste Water Treatment Facilities, $16,600. Police Department, $3,705,753. Fire Department, $3,133,984. Building-- oh, sorry, Building Inspector, $174,116. Inspector of Gas and Plumbing, $25,635. Sealer of Weights and Measures, $6,659. Inspection of Wires, $26,235. K-9 Control, $8,250. Southeastern Regional Schools, that is $1,125,514. Public Works, $1,487,060. Public Works Snow Removal, that is $91,300.
Hold.
Okay. That Public Works, no removal. Okay. Public Works Street Lighting, $95,700. Waste Disposal Sanitation, $452,579. Tree Warden, $400. Board of Health, $126,745. A New Day Women's Workplace Crisis Center, $2,750. Brockton Area Arc, $250. Old Colony Hospice, $2,000. Council on Aging, $435,579. Veterans, $41,221. Library, $605,685. Plymouth County Extension Service, $200. Historic Commission, $1,775. Veterans and Memorial Day, $3,800. Retirement of Debt, $2,057,45. Interest on Long-Term Debt, $707,200. Okay, let's see. Interest, interest bands, what's that? Oh, short-term interest, that's $100,000. Benefits, $8,820,731.
Hold.
Was that a hold?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, and then Water, that is-- Okay, and then Water, that is, and then Water is $2,314,380. Grand Total, $46,717,898. So now we're going to go back to all the holds and we're going to discuss them in order. The first hold was for Finance Committee.
First, I just want to say thank you for doing a good job. I think Finance Committee is one of the most extremely hard jobs of this town to do.
Excuse me, can you give your name and address? Sorry.
Jack Hughes, 640 North Elm.
Thank you.
But my question really has to do with more of a big-picture item. What's the next borrowing article other than the one for the water treatment plant this year? Looking forward, you don't know? What, where's the next fire truck coming from? Or what's the next school roof? We don't have much in this budget and we all went up $2 million. And we got to think, we have no more reserve rainy day fund that's there that... When are we going to get nailed with another voting article that says we have to have a 2/3 majority to go borrow $6 million for something?
I mean, we do have a rainy day fund.
Yeah, but it's on its last legs. We're not putting money into it this year.
This is out of scope of the Finance Committee budget.
Oh, that's a good answer, Mr. Moderator, to skirt the question. But these guys are leading our town. I want them to look ahead. That's all I'm saying.
I understand. We can talk about that on a relevant article. This is regarding the $3,100 budget for the actual Finance Committee. So we have to stick to the rules.
There's no relevant article for the whole process. So I'm doing it on the whole $46 million or whatever we're spending this year. I think it's okay to do it right here because they're the committee that gave it to us. If you don't want to answer my question, please, the town residents, know we need to think ahead. That's all.
I mean, we don't, we don't have any crystal balls to know, you know, that we're going to have to make any of those big purchases. I mean, we have one from the Water Department this year.
But I think it's wise to look for those crystal balls. Do department heads have to, when you have your interviews with them, are they talking about?
Yeah, we do ask them.
The next dump truck or the fire truck or whatever?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jen, when Jen?
Oh, sorry. We do talk about that in the meetings and, you know, we've been replacing equipment every single year, using free cash. So we're actually, you know, keeping up with all of that stuff. You know, but we don't know if something's going to break. But, I mean, there is a committee that's looking at, you know, the school buildings. So, you know, that could be the next thing that we bring here.
If I can expand on that, Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
When the capital budgets are put in, Mr. Hughes, it's a five-year plan that we see. So we're presenting obviously what's there this year. Yes, down the road, there's a fire truck. It was thought that it would be this year, but it's not. And it's up, you know, when chief says it's ready, then it will show up. So we can't tell you this year, next year. I mean, it depends how many calls, how many miles, and everything we have now.
Now, that's an answer that's honest and making me feel more comfortable, is a five-year look ahead. Things like that, I was not aware of. And that's all I was asking, Mr. Moderator, was for some clearance.
And then, as, just to highlight what Jen said too, there is a school building committee going on now. And I can't say when there'll be a vote, what there'll be a vote, but that will be a large borrowing article if it comes to this town meeting.
Any more discussion on the Finance Committee? Hearing none, I'm going to move on to Treasurer Collector.
That's me. I noticed that we paid some more money to the middle, senior, high school from free cash to try to lower that debt. How many more years do we have to pay for the middle, senior, high school bond or whatever?
I want to say about 15. I think we're about halfway through. We have $16.3 million left on the original 30-plus million-dollar borrowing, so principal is about halfway through. We're paying down 1.2 million in principal a year on that loan right now. And there's another $3 million loan that we're paying down about $250,000 on. So it's about 15 years left.
I just want to thank you for looking for opportunities to go pay down some of our debt so that we don't keep rolling it over into our regular budget. Thank you.
Okay, the next hold was on Southeastern Regional Vocational School.
Neil Carling, 376 Walnut Street. If anyone knows, is all the towns and cities paying the same per capita per student that we pay? Because I noticed the budget went up. It's a great school. I'm not knocking the school and the students. Does anybody have an idea how many students that go there from West Bridgewater?
Yeah, they, they go through an application process and anybody that gets...
I know the application, but do you know how many actually students from West Bridgewater? If you don't know, that's fine.
I do.
Because the point I'm going to make, so when you get the answer, I just want to keep going. Because I remember Brockton had like 100, say 300 students, and they were paying a very small per capita. And we had a very low student ratio there, and we're paying a much higher, like five times higher. I was just curious if it's leveled right across the board.
There's a formula about how much the state contributes and how much the town is responsible for. And so Brockton gets a much better or much higher...
Yeah, of course. The illegals are hiding, but that's fine. All righty. I got the answer.
Yeah, there are more, more students going, Neil.
There are more students that got accepted, so we plan for all of them to go.
I think it's a great school. I mean, the more that go, the better off they are, in my opinion.
Any further discussion on Southeastern Regional? Hearing none, going to move over to Public Works Snow Removal.
Me again, 640 North Elm, Jack Hughes. What did we spend this year? Did we come in above or below our target?
Phil, do you want to answer? Go ahead.
We, Mr. Moderator, Phil McNulty, DPW Director. We spent about $300,000, as I recall. Once we exceed the number that's in the budget, we, we put in a request to the town administrator and Board of Selectmen to exceed that spending.
And where does the overrun come from? Town budget or does the state kick anything?
So every single year, we always overextend our snow budget. So what we'll do at the end of the year is we'll do an end-of-year transfer. So if we have money left over in a budget, which usually is in the benefits budget, we'll actually transfer money from that to take care of the overage. And, and Jack, just to let you know, that'll be done over the summer.
Any further discussion on Public Works Snow Removal? Okay.
Can I just answer his question on the kids going to the...
Yeah, sure. Real quick.
So it's, it's 78, 78 people, 78 children, sorry, going to the school.
Okay. Next, we're moving on to Benefits.
Neil Carling, 376 Walnut Street. Real quick, now, the benefits, is that for every, the whole town, they know, so no one else has benefit? That's like workman's comp on a... Can you just break it down, Dave, please? Through the chair, ask Dave Gagnon to break it down.
Sure, no worries, Neil. So the benefits budget covers all town employees exclusive of the Water Department because there is separate enterprise fund paid for through water rates. So that budget there covers all employees except for water.
If I'm in order, Mr. Moderator, how much of the water pay for their benefits?
Couple hundred thousand dollars.
And one last thing, before we vote on the budget, do we have any lawsuits pending against the town? And if we do, have we settled any on this budget, our last year's?
Currently, the town has no active lawsuits where we're defendant where there's a monetary amount, other than some appellate tax board cases where there's potential abatements to the ATB. But as named defendants, there's a few zoning cases, but those don't have any monetary ramifications for the town, town's plaintiff, and a couple civil actions pertaining to opioid and the 3M settlements with PFAS and the water. But to my knowledge, there's no claims against the town where we're defendants with monetary damages.
Thank you. And just on that point, the opioid, we had a class action suit we're part of, if I'm in order. Mr. Gagnon, could you just tell us, did we, did we get a, they settled the case against whatever? Do we get any money for that?
That's actually one of the articles, that's one of the articles in the budget tonight.
Is it?
Not in the budget, in the, in the warrant.
I've got my glasses, though.
No, that's okay.
I need a C and I dog.
Was the question about the opioid?
Yeah, the class action.
So, Mr. Moderator, are you okay if I answer that now? Would you want me to do it during the...
Yeah, we can do it quickly now, if that's okay.
Yeah, so a handful of years ago, we joined a, a civil action. There's 41,000 plaintiffs, including the town of West Bridgewater. We have recovered about $185,000 in total. There'll be more coming over the next 10 years or so, on average, about $15,000 to $20,000 per year. We have to create an account. You'll see that later in one of the articles. We just have to move the money over. And then from there, the Board of Selectmen will have the authority to spend it. It's a pretty restrictive use because it can only be opiate-related causes, but, but you'll see that in a couple of articles.
Any further discussion on Benefits? Hearing none, that concludes all the holds. So I'm going to call for a vote on the budget. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it unanimously. Article five, that is Paula Bunker.
Move that the town vote to accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 22I, which authorizes an annual increase in the amount of the exemption granted under General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 22, Clause 22A, Clause 22B, Clause 22C, Clause 22E, and Clause 22F by the percentage increase in the U.S. Department of Labor Bureau of Labor Statistics Consumer Price Index, CPI, for the previous year as determined by the Commissioner of Revenue to be effective for applicable exemptions granted for any fiscal year beginning on or after July 1st, 2025.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Finance Committee?
Recommended unanimously.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended 2-0.
Thank you. Would you like to speak to the motion?
This is just something that we do every year to just increase exemptions for benefit for veterans, disabled residents, and such as that. So this is standard.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it unanimously. Article six, also Paula Bunker.
Accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5C and a half, which provides for an additional real estate exemption for taxpayers who are granted personal exemptions on their domiciles under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5, including certain blind persons, veterans, surviving spouses, and seniors, and to provide that the additional exemption shall be up to 25% of the personal exemption to be effective for exemptions granted for any fiscal year beginning on or after July 1st, 2025, or take any other action relative thereto.
Thank you. Is there a second? Finance Committee?
Recommended unanimously.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended 2-0.
Would you like to speak to the motion?
It's still standard now, so we're good.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call, oh, okay. Come to the microphone, please.
Oh, no.
No. Please state your name and address.
Lori Landry, 26 Kenan Street. I'm wondering what the age is for elderly.
There are different exemptions, so if you have a...
Just says elderly, what does that mean?
There are different exemptions. I, I don't have all that information right there.
Is there an age?
Hold on. Daniella Nelson, Principal Assessor. So for elderly, 70 and older.
Okay, thanks.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it unanimously. Yeah, no worries. Article seven, Philip McNulty.
Phil McNulty, DPW Director. That the town vote to accept and authorize to spend $498,000, the town's apportionment of Chapter 90 Local Transportation Aid funding for fiscal year 2026 in accordance with the figures released by the Massachusetts Department of Transportation in accordance with Chapter 86 of the Acts of 2008.
Thank you. Is there a second? Finance Committee?
Recommended unanimously.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously.
Would you like to speak to the motion?
Just that this, this funding is to repair roads and sidewalks.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it unanimously. Article eight, that is Cheryl Cambria.
Move that the town vote to appropriate from the Community Preservation Fund estimated revenues, the following amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for committee administrative expenses, open space, historic resources, and community housing reserves, and other expenses in fiscal year 2026, with each item to be a separate appropriation or reserve. The appropriations are, from FY 2026, estimated revenues for committee administrative expenses, $10,750. From FY 2026, estimated revenues for open space reserve, $31,900. From FY 2026, estimated revenues for historic resources reserve, $26,900. From FY 2026, estimated revenues for community housing reserve is $31,900. From FY 2026, estimated revenues for undesignated funds is $0.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Finance Committee?
Recommended unanimously.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously.
Would you like to speak to the motion?
This is our typical warrant that we do every year as directed by the Coalition and the fund regulations. 10% of the money that we bring in has to go into, I call them buckets, and that money can only be spent on those specific items.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it unanimously. Article nine, Cheryl Cambria.
Move that the town vote to appropriate $5,000 for the FY 2026 Community Preservation Fund Estimated Budgeted Revenue Fund to fund the historical project, the Memorial and Veterans Day Veterans Legacy Committee's Recognition Project.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Finance Committee?
Recommended unanimously.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously.
Would you like to speak to this motion?
This is a continuation of a project by this group. I think they started it one or two years ago, and they are developing a historical database of all veterans in town, and they'll be memorialized with plaques.
Sounds awesome. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it unanimously. Article 10, Scott Goldar.
Move that the town vote to transfer from free cash a sum of $100,000 to fund other post-employment benefits liability trust fund established in accordance with Chapter 32B, Section 20 of the Massachusetts General Laws.
Thank you. Is there a second? Okay. Finance Committee?
Recommended unanimously.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously.
Would you like to speak to the motion?
This is funding for OPEB, which is going to pay for employees' health insurance down the line. We started this in 2013, and the credit rating agencies look very favorably upon continually funding it.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it unanimously. Article 11, Chief Nixon. Article 11, Chief Nixon.
Good evening. I'd like to move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $10,000 as the town's match for the Web Task Force as fiscal year 2026.
Thank you. Is there a second? Finance Committee?
Recommended unanimously.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously.
Would you like to speak to this motion?
So this is our yearly match to be a member of the Web Task Force with Bridgewater, East Bridgewater, Whitman, and the College. It supplements our special investigations, drug invests, and exploitation cases.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Eyes have it unanimously. Article 12, Marcy Lee.
Move that the town vote to transfer from free cash a sum of $139,972 to be expended by the Board of Selectmen to fund the opioid settlement account, established in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 53, Clause 4 of the Massachusetts General Laws.
Thank you. Is there a second? Finance Committee?
Recommended unanimously.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously.
Would you like to speak to the motion? Okay. This is kind of what we talked about earlier, about the class action lawsuit. Any discussion?
So, Jack Hughes, 640 North Elm. We're spending $140,000, and I really don't know what you're asking me to spend it on. Is it we're paying to be part of the lawsuit? What is it really for?
Jack, you're not wrong in the way that it's worded, but unfortunately, it's what was mandated for us to forwarding. So, when we entered into this class action on multi-district lawsuit a number of years ago, there was no legislative process for when the money came in to be able to expend. So the money just sat in the account and rolled over year after year after year in our free cash account. It could not be spent for any purposes. They have now defined that in the role of the Board of Selectmen in being able to spend it. So in this case, we have to actually transfer it from what I would call a holding account, but our holding account is our free cash account. So it was just being transferred from that into this here, and then at a later date, upon a petition, the Board of Selectmen, Board of Health has to approve it, and the Board of Selectmen have to ratify it.
So it's like revenue that came into the town that we're just moving?
1,000% correct.
Now I get it. It's not like we're spending the money out of our bank account.
That is correct.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Eyes have it unanimously. Article 13, Phil McNulty.
That the town vote to transfer a sum of $3,307 from the Commonwealth Infrastructure Enhancement Trust Fund to be expended for the construction and engineering of sidewalks, roads, street intersections, or equivalent.
Thank you. Is there a second? Finance Committee?
Recommended unanimously.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously.
Would you like to speak to the motion?
This is a routine annual article. This is for allocating funds generated through a state tax on Uber and Lyft drivers for operating in town.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Neil Conley, 376 Walnut Street. Is he a new building? All right. Question, can I throw the jig? I just ask him.
If it's relevant to the article, yes.
Say that again?
If it's relevant to the article, yes.
Thank you. Can you, he said it's highway, the sidewalks and things like that. How many sidewalks, I know we get money from the state that goes into the highways. If I can back up, how much do we get this year for the state? I thought it came out of the lot of you or something like that. If you know, I'll chop your head.
$490,000.
Now you take that money to fix the roads, our town roads, not the state roads. But anyways, how many sidewalks are we actually going to be doing, if I'm an order, Mr. Moderator? No, I'm not being wise, but if I'm an order, how many sidewalks? The last time I heard, it cost $300 a foot. From Chris Iantelli when he was here before, that was sidewalks and doing the... And do you have any major project for the town? Because it is a huge issue nowadays.
Were you, Mr. Moderator, while you were talking sidewalks?
Yes, because that's because it was in that article you just said.
So River Street is the next one, it's on the order of 400 and somewhere a thousand for half a mile, to give you some idea.
And real quickly, and do they have it, is that done through the state of a high, and you oversee the project, correct? Because it's not a state job, it's a private job.
So Chapter 90 goes from the state?
Yeah.
Which will come up, and sidewalks has generally been a, there's a sidewalk account that usually comes up every year at town meeting, and just accumulates.
And that will be starting River Street, when you just said, when's that going to start, and how long will it take?
Mid to late summer, and it should be this season, you know, by December.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Eyes have it unanimously. Article 14, Phil McNulty.
That the town vote to transfer from free cash a sum of $15,000 to be expended by the Department of Public Works for a one-day event to provide household hazardous waste management and disposal services, including all incidental and related costs.
Thank you. Is there a second? Finance Committee?
Recommended unanimously.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously.
Would you like to speak to the motion?
It's intended to be a one-day event at the transfer station to expand the services, the normal services, to handle disposal, handling and disposal of waste, oils, fuels, paints, antifreeze, aerosol cans, tires, et cetera.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Eyes have it unanimously. Article 15, Phil McNulty.
That the town vote to transfer from free cash a sum of $479,000 to be expended by the Department of Public Works for the construction of the South Elm Street Bridge Replacement, Bridge Number W-18-022, including all incidental and related costs.
Thank you. Is there a second? Finance Committee?
Recommended unanimously.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously.
Would you like to speak to this motion?
Just an overall, Phase 1 was the bridge design, and that's complete. This is for Phase 2, which is construction. A mass DOT small bridge grant is anticipated to be collected this month for half a million to cover this job, and $479,000 matching funds are required to meet the cost estimate for the project.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Where's the bridge on South Elm Street? Is it past, south of Route 24, going to a dead end?
If you're heading south on South Elm Street, it's just past the transfer station.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Eyes have it unanimously. Article 16, Phil McNulty.
That the town vote to transfer from free cash a sum of $270,000 to be expended by the Department of Public Works to purchase a six-wheel dump truck with plow, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to dispose of the vehicle to be taken out of service in the best interest of the town.
Is there a second? Finance Committee?
Recommended unanimously.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously.
Would you like to speak to the motion?
This article is intended to replace a 20-year-old dump truck with, it's still a stick shift and two-wheel drive. And increasingly, it's difficult to find replacement parts for the vehicle and drivers that drive it to the stick shift.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Eyes have it unanimously. Article 17, Phil McNulty.
That the town vote to transfer from free cash a sum of $24,000 to be expended by the Department of Public Works to purchase a 72-inch, six-foot Kubota zero-turn mower, and authorize the Board of Selectmen to dispose of the mower to be taken out of service in the best interest of the town.
Is there a second? Finance Committee?
Recommended unanimously.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously.
Would you like to speak to this motion?
Again, to replace an old mower, a 15-year-old mower in kind with high hours on it.
Any discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Eyes have it unanimously. Article 18, Chief Nixon.
Good evening. I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash a sum of $130,320, $130,320 to be expended by the Police Department to purchase two cruisers, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to dispose of the vehicles to be taken out of service in the best interest of the town.
Is there a second? Finance Committee?
Recommended unanimously.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously.
Would you like to speak to the motion?
This is replace a 2017 sedan, which Ford doesn't put in the fleet anymore for cruisers, and another SUV that has 100,000-plus miles on it.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Neil Conley, 376 Walnut Street. We approved one last year, and you said it takes two years to get?
No, right now, we're probably six months in acquisition.
And how come we're asking for two cars? Usually it's a car a year.
So we've been kind of falling in every other year. Typically, it's gone one year, one, then two, but it kind of comes and goes based on the miles we put on it.
But 100,000 miles don't seem like a lot of miles.
Well, when they're running 24 hours a day, and what's happened is these cruisers are putting wear and tear on them. So even though it's not a lot for a passenger vehicle, it's tough for a performance vehicle. And then the two that we're putting out, we've been having a lot of maintenance done on it.
I don't want to get arrested, I support this article. I don't want to think I'm in Canton.
I'll allow it. Okay. Hearing no other discussion, all those in favor? Opposed? Eyes have it unanimously. Very wise. Article 19, Chief Nixon.
With the softball, thank you, Neil. I want to move that the town vote to transfer from free cash a sum of $79,341 to be expended by the Police Department to purchase tasers, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to dispose of the tasers to be taken out of service in the best interest of the town.
Is there a second? Finance Committee?
Recommended unanimously.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously.
Speak to the motion?
So this is replacing integrated ECWs, tasers, the yellow weapons that our officers use. They are no longer manufacturing, servicing, or replacing the model that we're using. This will give us 10 more to replace to a newer standard and a better item.
Any discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Eyes have it unanimously. Article 20, Chief Tibbo.
That the town vote to transfer from free cash a sum of $69,787 to be expended by the Fire Department to purchase a new SCBA fill station.
Is there a second? Finance Committee?
Recommended unanimously.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously.
Would you like to speak to the motion?
This is the SCBA fill station that is permanently housed in the Fire Department that fills our air bottles. The current one we have now is no longer being made anymore, therefore, parts are impossible to find, and is about 15 to 20 years old.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Eyes have it unanimously. Article 21, Chief Tibbo.
That the town vote to transfer from free cash a sum of $24,818 to be expended by the Fire Department to purchase a power ambulance cot.
Is there a second? Finance Committee?
Recommended unanimously.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously.
Would you like to speak to this motion?
You own two ambulance cots for each ambulance in town, and one of the cots has reached 10 years of life, and the manufacturer will not warranty it anymore.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Eyes have it unanimously. Article 22, Chief Tibbo.
That the, excuse me. That the town vote to transfer from free cash a sum of $15,260 to be expended by the Fire Department to purchase jaws of life equipment, or equipment only, and I will speak to that one, it's my turn.
Okay. Is there a second? Thank you. Finance Committee?
Recommended unanimously.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously.
Would you like to speak to this?
Before Senator Timmeltie left office at the end of last year, he was able to secure a $50,000 earmark for the Fire Department to purchase a new set of electric jaws of life. We have purchased three tools, which is the cutter, the ram, and the spreader, which is, makes up the nuts and bolts of the jaws of life. This is just to purchase the rest of the equipment, batteries, power cords, chargers, and miscellaneous equipment that goes with it.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Eyes have it unanimously.
Thank you.
Article 23, Anna Iantelli.
Move that the town transfer from free cash a sum of $14,721 to be expended by the town clerk to purchase voting booths.
Is there a second? Finance Committee?
Recommended unanimously.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously.
Would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, so we have some very old voting booths that we are bad and using, and we also now have a larger voting population and are required to have more voting booths per precinct. And if you noticed at that little small election we had in November, that I had to put up cardboard temporary voting booths. So I am looking to replace all the old booths and those cardboards with a new voting booth. It's actually four booths in one, and it takes up the space of two. And I actually had it out, if you saw it coming in, that's what I'd like to purchase.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Eyes have it unanimously. Article 24, Marilyn Mather.
To move that the town vote to transfer from free cash a sum of $6,829 to be expended by the Council on Aging to purchase and install new flooring in the office areas.
Thank you. Is there a second? Finance Committee?
Recommended unanimously.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously.
Would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Eyes have it unanimously. Article 25, Robin Dragonetti.
Move that the town vote to transfer from free cash a sum of $118,176 to be expended by the school committee to replace the security cameras and door access at the middle senior high school.
Is there a second? Finance Committee?
Recommended unanimously.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously.
Would you like to speak to the motion?
Yeah, so the cameras in this building are original to the building. They are 10 years old, as the building was built 10 years ago. They are failing, and as we've heard a lot tonight, a lot of the parts cannot be purchased because a lot of the vendors no longer sell these cameras. They're also failing, last summer, we had a server failure, so they're really reaching the end of life. The new system would be 51 cameras, it's about 103 feeds. The mapping of the building is much better, so some areas that were no longer accessible by camera are now. This also includes the keypads on the doors for the card access. And one notable upgrade would be the athletic door, which currently has a card reader, but it does not have the mechanism in the door to use the card reader. So there are physical keys being used. So it would really just allow the school to tighten up on security and know who has access to that door.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Eyes have it unanimously. Ayes have it unanimously. Article twenty-six, Robin Dragonetti.
Move that the town vote to transfer from free cash a sum of sixty thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars to be expended by the school committee for Chromebooks for students at the middle senior high school.
Is there a second?
Second.
Finance Committee?
Recommended unanimously.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously.
Like to speak to the motion?
Yeah, so this is, um, a hundred and twenty-five Acer Chromebooks, it's for the incoming seventh graders. Um, each device is just under five hundred dollars, that includes the Chromebook, the warranty, and then the Google Chrome for Education License, which allows our technology department to manage all of the, um, devices remotely.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it by majority. Article twenty-seven, Wayne Parks.
Sorry, I'm a righty, so I...
Don't give me a backhand.
All right. Move that the town vote to transfer from water surplus a sum of one hundred and thirteen thousand, eight hundred and eighty-four dollars to be expended by the water commissioners to purchase an F six sixty dump truck and authorize the Board of Selectmen to dispose of the vehicle to be taken out of service in the best interest of the town.
Thank you. I hear a second. Finance Committee?
Recommended unanimously.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously.
Like to speak to the motion?
All right, so, we just received our past, last dump truck. We usually do it on a three-year cycle jack, so we do have a plan in place. Unfortunately, this one has a few issues besides the fact that it's rotting to death. So, we're losing the antifreeze out of the reservoir, it's disappearing. So if I said that we're finding a chocolate milk kind of substance in our oil, it would mean that it needs a... Yep, it needs a head gasket. We've replaced the turbocharger, rebuilt the turbocharger numerous times on this truck. The transmission also is losing fluid. We just went through an issue before the fi, thing finally died where we repaired the transmission, but it's on its last legs also.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Please come to the microphone for questions.
I believe it's in one of the slides. If we, I'm sorry, if we could advance. Hmm, well, nope, all right. It's not there. I believe, it's a two thousand and five, it came the same year I came.
I brought it with you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
It has a hundred and thirty-two thousand miles on it.
Thank you. Hearing no other discussion, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it unanimously. Okay. Before we move on to the next article, I did notice that State Senator Driscoll has arrived. If you want to give a quick, brief update, um, and then we'll get back to the articles. You can come up on the podium if you want.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Moderator, um, town administrator, town clerk, members of the, uh, town meeting and, um, select board, thank you so much. Rep Plouffe is right behind me, I'm, uh, State Senator Bill Driscoll, uh, your new state senator as of January, and I appreciate the opportunity, uh, Mr. Moderator, to, to say a few words tonight. Um, and it's been, uh, a whirlwind since I got into the Senate, so I was the state rep from Milton and Randolph for eight years prior, and, uh, just wanted to share a couple of things with you. We're in budget season up on Beacon Hill. This past week, the Senate worked on a supplemental budget related to the fair share amendment, um, the fair share millionaire's tax, and, uh, see, Rep Plouffe, uh, just, just, we were racing here from the State House. Rep, welcome to join up here, if that's okay, Mr. Moderator? Sure, thank you. Um, and, um, the, in the, the House did the supplemental budget a few weeks ago, the Senate just took it up. Included in that for West Bridgewater is a twenty-five thousand dollar amendment for , uh, school maintenance and capital projects, so we're hopeful that that amendment survives, uh, the conference committee. You may be familiar, maybe not, with the process on Beacon Hill. Things passed in the House, things passed in the Senate. If there's differences in them, conference committee has put together about six members, they work out the differences, so we hope that that, that amendment survives, um, and brings an additional twenty-five thousand to the schools for, you know, maintenance needs and things. Also on the state budget, uh, matching, uh, the, the State Senate takes up the budget next week, so that's the, the annual fiscal year budget for FY twenty-six. I filed a couple of amendments for West Bridgewater in there to actually matching, uh, your amendment, Rep Plouffe, uh, she secured money, uh, for the food bank, and I also, um, I filed a, an amendment, um, related to the council on aging, operations of the council on aging for twenty-five thousand. One of the things I ju, I wanted to say to you as I introduced myself to, uh, town meeting, uh, as I mentioned, I served as rep for, state representative for eight years, uh, prior to succeeding, um, Senator Timmeltie in this role, and my policy then is, is the same now. If, if the select board, if town meeting sends a home rule petition, uh, forward to Beacon Hill, I'll do my part, uh, to make sure that that advances, uh, when it's, when it's in front of me, when it's in the, the Senate or on my desk and, uh, trying to make its way through committee, um, I will be your advocate, uh, for town meeting or the select board and those home rule petitions going forward. My door is always open, um, please, if you want to reach out, if you're having an issue with a state agency, whether it's registered motor vehicles, unemployment, Department of Public Health, uh, one of the things that we do so well together, the House and the Senate and your delegation, is liaise with those state agencies. A lot of times people are kind of hitting the head against the wall, getting nowhere, not getting a call back. That's where we can help escalate the case, so to speak, internally, make sure that you're getting an answer. It might, it might, the answer might be no, but you deserve, uh, um, to understand where the process is, where you are in the process, if it's an appeal or something you're waiting on, um, these are the types of constituent services that the rep and I are engaged in all the time. I have a website, buildriscolljunior.com, uh, we try to update it regularly, we'll certainly be updating over the next few weeks during the, the budget processes that goes forward. And, um, again, please don't hesitate to reach out if we can, we can be helpful with something on the state level. I want to hand it over to, um, State Rep here for a few words. Thank you.
Thanks, Senator. I'll be very brief because I know we're moving quickly and it's a Monday night. Um, I apologize for my tardiness. My name's Bridget Plouffe, I am the state rep for West Bridgewater now. Um, I was just sworn in, in January, so I'm very happy to be here. Um, again, I'm so sorry I'm late. We had an education committee hearing this afternoon where we were focusing on chapter seventy and the, uh, foundation formula, so it's super important, I know, to West Bridgewater, I've had several conversations with the administrator gag me about it. Um, so I did, didn't feel comfortable leaving early, but I just wanted to say hi, um, and I know that the Senator mentioned that the House did their budget two weeks ago, um, and that included twenty-five thousand dollars for the West Bridgewater, excuse me, the West Bridgewater food pantry. Um, so, very pleased with that, hoping the Senator can keep it in in the Senate budget.
Yeah, that's right.
So, um, thank you all for being here, and I will hand it back to, uh, Moderator Ross. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks so much.
Remember everyone, they work for you, so contact them if you need anything. Thank you. Now we're going to get back to the articles. Article number twenty-eight, I understand that you have a big presentation for this. If you mind keeping it down to five, seven minutes, that'd be ideal.
They look like a giving crowd, we probably don't have to say anything to it.
And I just want to, before we begin, I just want to say this is a borrowing article, so when we do vote on it, it will be a two-thirds vote.
All right. Move that the town vote to borrow a sum of six million, one hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars to be expended by the water commissioners for the construction of a new iron manganese removal plant.
Hearing a second, Finance Committee?
Recommended unanimously.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously.
Would you like to speak to, obviously you're going to speak to the motion?
Do we really have? No. All right, so, um, David alluded to earlier, you're voting on two businesses today, the town and the water department. We're separate entities and we each generate our own revenue and pay our own bills. So, we were there for you when you went to bed last night, we were there for you, if you're like me, in the middle of the night, and we were there for you in the morning. The water department is a twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five thing, I can't block off a pipe and say we'll come back three weeks later and put it together. Um, we spend countless hours training for the licenses that we hold and the refreshing courses that we have to take to hold those licenses. Um, the water department is a revenue, an enterprise system, this means we must generate our own revenue and pay our own bills. That is taxes on the town side and water rates on the water side. The water department is an expensive system to run and maintain. We can only do what you provide us funding to do. Next? All right. Seven public notifications. I've sent those out since I've held this job. I know them all very well. I'll speak to every seven of them. I just got to catch up. Raw water E. coli, that just sounds bad, doesn't it? Um, I will explain why it isn't at the end. It's a raw water sample from the river well three A at Manly Street. All sampling from this point on is always done to waste, so that nothing enters the system. Uh, Mass DEP takes this seriously and on a repeat sample, we took another detect, so we were told to shut it down. Uh, we cleaned the well, we rehabilitated it, on our next sample, we had a caliform, a coliform bacteria hit. Not as bad, but we said, at that point, DPW took the well away from us. The only way that we could take, get the well back was to become four log certified, which we did. Four log treatment in a drinking water means that we, um, treat to ninety-nine point nine-nine percent reduction or inactivation of viruses. To achieve it, it means that at a given flow rate, we dose the water with a calculated amount of chlorine to get to a certain dose level for prescribed amount of contact time prior to the delivery to our first customer. The issue with Manly Street is our first customer is ten feet away, so that doesn't give us any time. So what we do is we, when it runs through the filter beds, it's in the beds for about thirty minutes before it comes out, that gives us our contact time. But we have to dose in at a certain amount and come out at a certain amount. Now, why it wasn't bad? We were already chlorinating and the finished water sample for that was a zero detect. So the water that came out of the plant was treated, it removed the E. coli, so it never hit the system. What you received was what was called a non-boil order, which meant you didn't have to do anything. But I, anytime something happens in our system, I have to tell you. That's required by law. Uh, manganese, that one has a baby bottle in the upper right corner. Manganese is a naturally occurring mineral, which is actually healthy for you. The issue here is, is if you have a baby and you're making baby formula without water, which has manganese in it, the baby formula already has manganese in it. So at that point, that's why when you come out of the hospital, they tell you if you have an infant, don't use water, they want you to use boiled, um, bottled water because it doesn't have any minerals in it. PFOS, all three of those came out of the Manly Street plant. Um, the last one was issued in one eight, two, twenty twenty-four. We are running a pilot study on a spare filter to remove PFOS. It is working, it worked better until our old filter media followed the PFOS media. In our design of the final PFOS building, we incorporated a finished filter, so that will never happen again. Um, the other one is a missample. We have a sample schedule given to us by Mass DEP, for the most part, it's quarterly, sometimes there are specific date samples. We also missed a quarterly sample for Osnic, um, Atwell too. We sampled it within being late, but the results were zero, non-detect. And then the final one is a UMCR five monitoring. We are part, we were part of EPA's next round, that it's unregulated contaminants, that they look for new contaminants to treat for. I gave you the results in the consumer confidence report, I'm required to give you those results and tell you that we tested for it. There were no unusual findings. Well, so when I talk to the public a lot, everybody tells me they don't drink the water. So here's our water versus bottled water. So the FDA tests bottled water. They don't have to tell you if there's something wrong with it. They had an old E. coli outbreak that hit fifteen states. Somebody died out of that, but they didn't tell you. Everything that happens with our water, I have to tell you, that's the non-boil order, everything. Our water is a lot safer than that bottled water that everybody wants. It's convenient and I get it, but if you look at, on average, a plastic one-liter bottle will contain about two hundred and forty thousand particles, nanoparticles of plastic compared to just about five point five particles in our water. All right, next? All right. This one was an active slide, does it still, if you go across it, is it still active? Now, all right, so this was a water leak, and because the slide's not active, you're not going to see it, but a snowplow driver decided to push snow where he wasn't supposed to, it was illegal what he did, he pushed it out of the site and across the road and took out our hydrant. Um, the residents up on Walnut Street began calling the town, they notified David before they notified us, um, but it took me about thirty minutes to find it because you couldn't see it, the snow covered it. But I had to drive up and down listening and I heard it, found it, and twenty minutes later, we had it shut down. They, the company did pay for the replacement of the hydrant that they took out. All right. Most of the water department's infrastructure is loaded five feet underground, we have about seventy miles of underground pipe dating back from nineteen-ten to the present. All right. This was a catastrophic failure of one of those pipes, we came within a couple of hours of draining out six million, five hundred thousand gallons of water out of our tanks. It was hidden in a remote location, out of sight. This leak was pretty bad. This was the first time that we came really close to the town having a boil order. Um, there were some infuriating circumstances surrounding this leak. I knew by the sheer volume we were losing that it had to have surfaced. We have, um, what we call cross-country lines, so I was literally running through the woods trying to find this leak because we weren't finding it in the street. Um, I did find it, we shut it down, with the help of a lot of the DPW guys, we came together, um, we made a quick repair in the piping system, so all residents were returned to service on that very night, and then we made the repair to the pipe a week later.
You are, over time, can you wrap up in a minute or two?
Just both then. It's not...
Let's get on, this is all history.
All right. It all pleases, all right. Keep going. Next? That's our water permit? Next? Um, we're a standalone system with seven wells? Next? That's what we get out of our wells? Next? That's what you're allowed to withdraw from your wells by our permit, three hundred and six thousand, six hundred million gallons of water per year? Next? This is what you took out of the system last year, two hundred and forty-one thousand, five hundred and sixty-seven, three forty-one million gallons. The peak day was one point two million dollars, gallons. Um, we're required to do... That's okay, go ahead. Go ahead. Next? Next? All right. That's Station One. Next? That's Station One before it was rehabilitated? Next? That's Station One, that building still exists, it's incorporated in the previous picture, it's part of the new building. Next? That's the iron and manganese that comes out of Station One, that's what we're looking to build, an iron and manganese treatment plant. Uh, if you notice, it's through the roof. to build, an iron and manganese treatment plant. If you notice, it's through the roof. Point three is the limit. We're above it in Station One. This station does not produce water to the system. We just run it so that we don't lose the permit on it. Next. We had some testing done on it. It gave us a process. We decided not to use that process. Next. This is Station Two. That building still exists too. That well, at the time they were putting in that well, that's when I was born. That well is still in existence today too. So that means that well is 66 years old and you're still drawing from it. Next.
How old are you?
66. Next. That's the drawdown on the wells. This well, this station, we're running because it has higher levels of iron and manganese. You'll see on the next screen. See? And we exceeded. That's why you've got that manganese notice because we exceeded the point three. That means that you have to, a plan of action. Next. That's Station Four. Next. That's Station Four's wells. Next. Oh, can we back up? Notice that this is one of the best well, two wells that you have in town. Everything is pretty much flat lying there. It's in an old abandoned sand pit. So the water's naturally filtered coming into those wells. Next. That's the drawdown on the wells. Next. All right. This is the new treatment plant. The circled areas are the reason for the additional funding. Next. All right. So the big cloud on the left, we actually stretched the building to allow for future PFOS tanks. Next. The circle on the right, we added an air tower. We use a chemical potassium hydroxide which costs a lot of money. It's $20,000 to $25,000 per tanker. It's a volatile pricing chemical. It's the one reason that Jack voted against me one year when I asked for a budget increase. I don't hold it against you. So the air tower will actually raise the pH of the water so we use less of this chemical. Next. And here you can see the math saying how we're gonna save money using this by using less of that chemical. The payback is in 9.6 years. Next. How aeration works. When I met with the selectmen and the things, I had no idea how it actually worked. It removes the CO2 out of the water and it's an acid so that by thing brings the pH of the water up. Next. All right. That's the future PFOS vehicles, vessels, and those are the Green Sand Plus vessels. Next. It's a 1.8 million gallon per day plant. That's the basement where the backwash water will go into the basement. We'll recycle it back into the plant. Eventually, we'll haul off some sludge at the end. On the right side is the air tower where the water dumps down and then gets pumped into the green sand filters. Next. That's just a cross view of it. Next. Another cross view. Next. All right. Another part of this project is we're gonna abandon a transfer line that comes down Norman Ave and heads up towards Matt Field Street. Next. That's it coming down Norman Ave. Next. That's it making the intersection at East Street. Next. Why wasn't the plant designed to treat PFOS? When we started this, we started this more than four years ago before the pandemic occurred and PFOS came along and eggs were still under $2 a dozen. Next. We applied for SRF funding and we made the list. So that's another reason we couldn't change it. Manly Street has received, I usually tell you that we're required to fund it in full and I can't tell you what we're getting. Manly Street did receive a 0% loan. It received 16.8% principal forgiveness, $658,609. We also applied for an ECSDC grant, which we did receive. Next. We got $3.1 million to split between the two projects. Next. These are just the things. Seems we have a lot of rocks in town. Hey, see that white stuff? We do get that sometimes, maybe. All right. Next. Next. Notice South Street. Anybody ever drove down South Street? You don't see blank spaces like that anymore. There's where Truchis was. There's T-Bolt's new fire truck right there. Next. Last year, you approved $10.17 million for Seer Norman. I'm back asking for more funds. Wait, wait, wait for it. The PFOS addition is estimated currently to cost $3.84 million. That means at a future town meeting or before, we'll be asking for that money. That puts the total estimated cost of this plant when complete at $20.706 million. Next. I'm speeding up. So what happens if you vote it down? So Station One, we're over the action level for manganese with these wells. They will not let you run them. Station Two, we've exceeded the action level and we're running at or near the action level. I'm required to test it quarterly as a result. They'll either make you build a treatment plant or shut it down. Station Four is fine. Now comes 2029. PFOS goes to four nanograms per liter, most likely build treatment plants for all running wells or shut them down, except Manly, which has a PFOS removal plant we're building currently. We currently have SRF funding and the ECSDC funding. How much or what is currently unknown? The PFOS portion of Seer Norman, we applied to the SRF. We did not make the list for the PFOS portion. We'll keep reapplying, hopefully. Next. Article... We're back at the beginning. Next.
I think it wrapped up.
That's it.
I think that's it.
I can tell you that I saw an article. The current administration, federal, is clawing back money, so these grants probably will not exist in the future.
Okay. Any further discussion on the article?
Neil Colley, 3712, said you borrow on $6 million.
$166,000.
All right. We, what kind of loan are we getting?
So we're hoping for a 0% interest loan again out of the SRF State Revolving Fund Grant.
If we don't, well, so it's gonna be, you're gonna borrow money anyways and how much is it gonna, how long are you gonna have the payback? What's the payback on it?
So that's a 20-year note.
20-year. And what's it gonna cost? Do you have a homeowner?
Uh, that actually should be a slide up there.
Yeah, one last question. When I see, if I'm in order, when I see loans like this, I honestly believe Scott should be handling loans like this.
Me too.
That should be taken out of the hands and given to him. He's dealing with banks all the time and that's my opinion. And then, no disrespect to this gentleman. He can be out doing his own work instead of pulling his hair out.
Yeah, just, just to let you know, Neil, Scott as treasurer handles all debt for the town.
And that's part of it. Okay, good.
I do, I do work with Scott.
Yeah, I know who you are.
Jack Yu, 640 North Elm. So I just wanna clarify. We're already doing a plant on Manly Street.
Yes.
With this PFAS thing in it.
Yes.
And this money is to add on to the money we authorized.
All right. So Manly is a separate loan. That, that plan is actually costing $4.8 million. Just for reference, Manly with land purchases originally was $4 million. So when that comes in, it'll be less than $4 million. We just paid off a whole pile of debt or this year, we'll pay off the rest of the tank painting. So the Manly debt will slide right into our budget with no increases, hopefully.
So my question is, this plant?
Yes.
Is going into a building that's already there that we?
No, this plant is a, it's a brand-new plant. We're building the building and everything and the infrastructure around it. That's why.
There's something existing because you had clouds around the outside.
That's the plans. That's the 65% design. We're at 90% now, but I couldn't update the slides.
Okay.
It didn't change.
So this is on Seer Street?
It will be at Seer Norman. It'll be where the water department office is.
Right.
Up on the side of the hill.
And that's probably where my water comes from because of where I live.
We're a blended system, but for most likely.
It comes from there.
Manly does not produce that much water.
So basically, I'm for this, but you're saying that in 2029, we gotta spend more money?
Before 2029, that's when the federal law will kick into four nanograms per liter. Yes. That's why the...
That's if we don't do this.
If you turn it all down, well, you have no place to build anything, so.
I'm kinda confused.
Jack, let me just, so this plant is for iron and manganese only. So what Wayne is communicating is that this plant is being built for that purpose and by 2029, with the expectation that the federal government is going to lower it down to point four, that he will then have to spend another $3 to $4 million to mitigate for PFAS at that time.
And this all goes into our water bills, right?
Yes.
There's no state matching grants or anything? What are we?
That's what the SRF, the State Revolving Fund, and the ECSDC grant.
So a couple of different buckets of cash that we have used to offset the costs. One is, is that, as Wayne said, there was a state revolving loan that was approved, $3.1, $3.2 million at 0%. There's a second grant that has also been approved for both $3.1 million and the Board of Selectmen, where we received $1.3 million in ARPA funds from the county. They allocate 100% of it towards the water department. Understand, all of those grants are not just for one project. It's for two. So you have to put the two together, then you allocate all the money against it. But we did receive in, in total, about $7 million of assistance towards these two projects.
So this $6 million, Neil asked, how much is it per household?
$96 per quarter. That's rough math.
It's 400 bucks a year.
Yes.
Okay. I still am for it because I don't really drink water bottles. I get my water out of the faucet.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. I'm gonna call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Article 29. That is Russell Regan.
Good evening. Move to see if the town will vote to amend the town's general bylaws, Article 17, animal control officers as follows or take any action related thereto.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Finance Committee?
Sorry. We recommended unanimous.
Okay. Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously.
Okay. Would you like to speak to the motion?
Sure. It's pretty straightforward. There were some state-level changes in the legislation relating to animal control and specifically commercial and personal kennels, and we're looking to just get in line with that language at the state level.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. I'm gonna call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes heavy unanimously.
Thank you.
Article 30. Tim Hay.
I move that the town vote to amend the town's general bylaw, Article 54, the West Bridgewater Construction Phase Stormwater Management and Soil Erosion Control Bylaw as printed in the warrant.
Hearing a second. Finance Committee?
Voted to refer to voters.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously.
Would you like to speak to the motion?
A few years ago, we passed the stormwater bylaw and what this does is lowers the threshold from 5,000 square feet of land disturbance to 2,000 square feet. We're finding that there's projects that are happening along the streets that don't have any oversight and projects that are happening on butters, parcels, causing drainage and erosion control on their neighbors with no oversight. This is just the move to give a little bit more oversight on this for administrative permit for smaller projects.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. I'm gonna call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes heavy unanimously. Article 31. Jeff Ryan?
That the town vote to amend the town's general bylaws, Article 12, Finance Committee is printed on the warrant.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Finance Committee?
Recommended unanimously.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously.
Would you like to speak to the motion?
Sure. So this is an attempt to improve the current process of appointing the committee that appoints the Finance Committee. So as it currently stands right now, I think we have a, we have a well-intentioned process, but it has many unintentional flaws. Right now, what is asked is that within 60 days of this meeting, that the town moderator appoint five people to a committee that then in turn will appoint members of the Finance Committee. And these are members that, that their terms are up or, or things along those lines. So what happens now is that, that timeline isn't often met. I can speak to my own appointment. It's hard to come out of this, this, this meeting, it's summertime, and try to get five people together and also try to solicit people that are interested in joining that committee. But when that committee meets, it is not necessarily the same people on a, on a year-to-year basis. You can have a group of five people one year, different group of five people the next year. There's no transition. There's no continuity. Honestly, there's, there's, and I wanna be clear, I'm criticizing the process. I'm grateful for everybody that has volunteered to be on this committee. But it doesn't necessarily provide leadership. It doesn't provide direction and it doesn't always provide the correct communication back to the people that have applied as well as the people that are present. And it doesn't always apply the correct communication to the town clerk's office to notify people for the appointments. And the final piece that it doesn't do, and again, well-intentioned, it also doesn't provide any trans, any transparency to anybody, anybody else in town. Our proposal is to change this committee and replace that committee with the Board of Selectmen, along with the town moderator and the town clerk. That would become the committee that appoints the people, the members to the Finance Committee. That would all be done in public. That would all be done on camera. And that would all be done with a professional support staff to handle any communication, any appointment letters, any communications, anything along those lines. So at this point, I will defer back to the moderator as you are part of this as well.
Yes. Thank you. Well, first, is there any discussion on the article? Perfect. Yeah. So I, you know, I, I'd just like to say, you know, I agree with that. You know, I, when I first got elected moderator, I supported the current system. And, you know, over the years, it's, you know, the rules for the way the current committee is, is you have to have members of the committee who are not involved in any other committee in town. And during the summer months, it's hard to find people who are, you know, willing to volunteer. It's hard to find people who, you know, know how to do the minutes. It's, it's a mess because every year, you possibly could appoint new people. And it's hard keeping track of things. So I think with this new system, if it's voted on, it's gonna provide more transparency, more openness to the system as well. Would anyone like to speak?
Yes. I think, I was in the Finance Committee for 13 years. My name is Sandra Wyatt, North Elm Street. I think putting a committee together that has people that are on this board, I think you should have people that are just in town that would help out with that board because I think it puts too much in the hands of people that already have enough to do. And we are, I was on it for 13 years and we just did it, we don't get paid. We do it for nothing. And these people all wanna be here. You know, to appoint people is gonna be difficult, I think. And I think people that volunteer for it are really caring about their, their town. I think it puts too much power in the other hands of other people to just appoint a board.
So there still is an application process. It's not gonna be just appointments. You have to apply. Just, it's literally the same system it is now. You still submit a resume. You still have to talk about, you can't just say, oh, I picked my buddy Jim down the street. You know, there's an actual process to this.
Yeah, but you want resumes for people that are accountants and all that. What if you just, I was a nurse and I was on it and I knew how to do the finance too. You know, so it's like, do you have to have bookkeeping and all that kinda stuff? Or can you just be a normal citizen that wants to go?
Exactly. You, you can be a normal citizen and the other, other thing too is...
Then why do you need a resume?
Well, that, I mean, I guess the, the committee can decide on what the procedures are, but what I'm saying is, is by having it this format, it's gonna be more open to the public. So people who don't wanna serve on the FinCom but might wanna attend the meeting to chime in their thoughts on the people applying for the position can chime in. Hey, this person's not an accountant, but I like how they said this. So it does add more openness.
So you look at an open application and it doesn't matter what they are because I was on the committee for 13 years and all of a sudden, they wanted my resume. I said, I'm a nurse. You knew I was a nurse when I volunteered for it. So these people are everyday people. They're not like, they, how many of you are accountants? How many of you are one? Yeah. So two, okay. So it's like normal, everyday people that are deciding this and they have a real, you know, opinion of what's going on in the town. So I think maybe you should think that over a little bit.
Yeah, and I, I, I actually agree with that. I think we should have a diverse Finance Committee like we have now.
And a diverse board that picks those people.
So the board that, I mean, so the board, how it is?
You've got selectmen.
Yep. Town clerk, town moderator. We are all accountable to the voters. So if you think we're not doing a good job.
No, no. I don't think you're not doing a good job, but I think if you had a few people that weren't on town boards or something, just regular citizens that had a say in it on the board.
So you could, you know, that's what I'm saying is you could attend the meeting and definitely.
Yeah, but we're still not on that board that's selecting them.
I mean, if you, if I, you know, I would listen to people who came to the meeting, you know, so.
Okay. And just my opinion.
It's just my opinion.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. I'm gonna call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it by majority. Article 32. And that is, Michael Perez?
That the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to take all necessary action, including a taking by eminent domain as necessary to acquire a permanent sidewalk easement adjoining to the southerly side of River Street and contain approximately 1,456 square feet of land. More or less, said easement being more particularly shown as parcel SW-TAC-W-TAC-1 on a plan of land entitled Plan of Easement to be acquired by the Town of West Bridgewater, 268 River Street, prepared for the Town of West Bridgewater, West Bridgewater, Massachusetts, Plymouth County, scale 1 inch equals 20 feet, dated December 10, 2024, prepared by Greenman Pedersen Incorporated, 181 Ballard Vale Street, Suite 202, Wilmington, Massachusetts, 01887. Said plan being on file with the office of the town clerk.
Thank you. Is there, I hear a second. Thank you. Finance Committee?
Recommended unanimously.
Recommended unanimously.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously.
Would you like to speak to the motion?
Neil, this goes back to talking about River Street sidewalk as previously mentioned, Mr. Conley.
Any further discussion?
Real quick on the, if you're taking, what are you taking, people's personal land? I'm starting to figure out River Street, I'm drinking too much town water, I'm losing my brain. But, you know, what, are you taking people's personal property like they did on Lincoln Street, like they slid it, the chemicals in there? Are we taking, is it residents' land we're taking, is it private property that's not being developed? Because up on Lincoln Street, I see, it was supposed to go on one side, now it's on the other side. You took land, I don't know, how much land can you take on somebody's property, three feet?
Yeah, so.
Through the chair, I'm asking Dave Gagnon, I think he has the answer, at least he acts like he does.
I know, I do try to act that way. So, yeah, and so on River Street, we, the DPW Department along with our engineers done a really good job, we're going to run the duration of where Howard Street is now, all the way down to South Elm, and we're going to be able to stay almost entirely in the town's right-of-way without any interference on any other personal property. Unfortunately, there is one resident that there is a sliver of property that we are going to need an easement on. They've been very helpful because they want the sidewalk, because they recognize we need, you know, it's unsafe, it truly is. So, so that's what we're doing, so they're, this is, they are in favor of this, they've already signed a right-of-way, they want us to be able to do this, this allows us to be able to put the sidewalk all the way up, it's on one person's property.
Just for two points, how much feet can you actually take though, from somebody's personal property? If we're running a sidewalk down my street, how much of my land could you take?
You want the official answer?
I know you want me out of town, but how much?
Honestly, as much as we want, I mean, it has to be approved, but there is no limitation.
If that was just three feet, no?
No.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes majority. Is my understanding the Planning Board will not be moving Articles 33 or 34, so therefore we will be moving to Articles 35. And that is being presented by Hugh Hurley.
Mr. Moderator, Hugh, I'm Hugh Hurley, the Chairman of the Planning Board. Move that the town vote to amend the town's zoning bylaws, fencing, screening, and landscaping section 6.6.4.1 as printed on the warrant with the following change, boundary fences shall not exceed seven feet in height without a permit issued by the building inspector.
Hearing a second, Finance Committee?
Voted to refer to voters.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously.
Would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Moderator, as this is a zoning article, the Planning Board has to make a recommendation to the town meeting. Please be advised that a public hearing was held on Wednesday, April 30, 2025 pursuant to Mass. General Law's Chapter 48, Section 5, the West Bridgewater Plan voted, Planning Board voted by unanimous vote of the four members present to recommend adoption of the following article with a change in height from 6.4 to 7 feet. And basically what this is, is bringing this in in compliance with the state building code on what heights it should be, is basically just changing it. It's formerly was 6.6 feet, 4 inches, and now it's 7 feet because that's what the state has changed it to.
Thank you.
Sorry, can you clarify, because it says eight feet here, is it seven or eight? In the article it says eight feet, but you said seven, can you just confirm whether it's seven or eight?
No, in the article it's.
Oh, sorry.
Initially it's 64 inches.
This is the article, seven.
Oh, it says seven on there, but it says eight in here, so.
So, we're voting on seven.
Is it seven?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
It's a.
Yeah, so we are voting on seven feet.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote, and this is a two-thirds vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it unanimously. Is my understanding that the Planning Board will not be moving forward with Articles 36 or 37, so that means I will move on to Article 38, which is also a two-thirds vote. Hugh Hurley?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Move that the town vote to amend the town's zoning bylaws, Site Plan, Section 7.2.1.1B as printed on the warrant.
Hearing a second, thank you. Finance Committee?
Refer to voters.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously.
Would you like to speak to this motion?
The intent of the article is to amend the zoning bylaws, Section 7.2.1.1.1B, to give the Inspector of Buildings authority to approve site plans for commercial applications under certain circumstances instead of requiring a Planning Board or Board of Appeals review as in all cases.
Thank you, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote, and this is a two-thirds vote again. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it unanimously. Article 39, James Noyce?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Move that the town vote to accept in accordance with Chapter 82, Sections 22 through 24 of the Massachusetts General Law, Lampost Lane as townway as shown on plan, approved by the Planning Board, filed with the Town Clerk, and recorded in the Registry of Deeds, or take any other action thereto.
Hearing a second, thank you. Finance Committee?
Recommended unanimously.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously.
Would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, this is for the acceptance of Lampost Lane, which is at the, right off the intersection of South Elm and Lincoln Street.
Thank you, any discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. That is the final article of the night, so that concludes our annual town meeting. The town meeting is now dissolved at 7:53.